Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting for Monday, October 9th, 2017. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on October 5th, 2017, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Mahmood, can I have a roll call, please?
Surely. Ms. Bogaczyansky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Mr. Kintz?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Hugh?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Do we have a quorum?
Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll get this right today. All right. We're going to begin by finishing up the business from last time, which is the approval of minutes. So we have executive session minutes. We'll start with that. So can I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes for the meeting held on September 25th, 2017?
Seven.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Motion passed.
On the left. Okay. Now, for the regular meeting minutes for September 25th, 2017, motion?
So, second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Just Dana on the side.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We had some correspondence as listed on your agenda, and I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Every year, all New Jersey public school districts are required to do an annual review of our state assessment results. Tonight, Dr. Antounis is going to be sharing the results of the PARK 2017 tests. With that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Antounis, and hopefully I can get this going.
Thank you. So, this is going to be difficult to see from where you are, but I'm more than happy to speak with anybody about it at any time if you send me an email or give me a call if you'd like to talk about it a little bit more. I'm more than happy to do that. Whatever you want. Okay. So, 2017 was the third administration of PARK, started in 2015. It seems like a lot longer that it's been around, but it hasn't. It's only been around since 2017. And so, we're going to show some of the year-to-year analysis, especially from 2015 to 2017, and how our district has fared. The students do take PARK in grades three through 11, and ELA and math. They take mathematics for all their math courses, plus Algebra I, Algebra II, and geometry. So there are five performance levels in PARK, and for those of you who's students did -- were assessed with PARK, you ought to have received quite a while ago the individual student report for your child. And the five levels go -- the range of the five levels goes from 650 through 850. So anything between 650 and 699 is a Level 1. Those students are not yet meeting grade level expectations. From 700 to 724, students are partially meeting grade level expectations. Level 3, which is approaching grade level expectations, vary between 725 and 749. Those three levels are not the levels that we want to see in our -- with our students. Those are the levels that, in the next several charts that you see, those percentages will be lower, and the other percentages, Level 4 and 5, will be higher. That's what we're looking for, a decrease in Levels 1, 2, and 3, and an increase in Levels 4 and 5. Level 4 means students are indeed meeting grade level expectations, and the scores range from 750 to 789. And Level 5 are our students who are exceeding grade level expectations, from 790 to 850. So again, I know it's difficult to see from the audience, but I'm more than happy to speak with anybody about this. If we take a look at the third column in each of the larger columns, in each of the levels, they are in blue. Those are the 2017 results. You will see, for the most part, that in each grade, 3 through 11, that the percentages for Levels 1 and Level 2, and in some cases for Level 3, have decreased. That's exactly what we'd like to see. Levels 4 and 5, meeting grade level expectations, especially when you're looking from 2015 to 2017, we have seen an increase. I'd like to point out that Grade 11 does not include students who took AP tests. Students who take AP tests do not have to participate in the PARK assessment at that grade level. Additionally, the last two columns, changes in Level 1 and Level 2 from 2015 to 2017, and changes in Levels 4 and 5 from 2015 to 2017. The change in Levels 1 and 2, again, as I said earlier, we want them to decrease, and we have seen a decrease across the board, and we have seen an increase across the board for Levels 4 and 5, and this is for English Language Arts Literacy, ELA. This is just another representation of the same data, which show Hillsborough is in blue, and New Jersey, the state of New Jersey, is in green. This is a visual representation of how Hillsborough is exceeding the expectations from the state at all grade levels. The same chart you saw just before for ELA, this is the chart for mathematics. Same holds true. There's a slight difference in Levels 1 and 2 from 2015 through 2017, a slight increase in Grade 6, and a very slight increase in Algebra II. For the most part, though, we do see a decrease in Levels 1 and 2, and an increase in Levels 3 -- I'm sorry, 4 and 5, across the board. Large increase in Grade 8, which, again, Grade 8 students can take either the Park Math, Mathematics Park 8, or students may take Algebra I, or students may take Geometry. Students only take one PARK assessment for Mathematics. They do not have to take -- if they're enrolled in Algebra I, they don't take Math 8 or and Geometry. They take one -- they take Algebra I is what they take. And a visual representation of how Hillsborough compares with the state, and as you can see, quick visual, that Hillsborough is exceeding the standards set forth by the state significantly when compared to the state. So, that's positive. This is -- the next chart is a comparison of our PARK administrations for English Language Arts. It's very -- it's actually the same data as that was on the last two columns in the other charts. This is just another visual representation of how the state requested that we present this to the public. So, we see a down arrow for Levels 1 and 2, and we see an up arrow for Levels 4 and 5 in Literacy. And in Mathematics, typically, we see very similar results, except in Algebra II, and in the changes in Level 1 and 2, and then in the change in Levels 4 and 5, there's a slight decrease in Grade 6, which you saw earlier in the other charts as well. When we take a look at our students who have tested in each of the areas, who have been assessed, we do see an increase overall. In 2016, we had about 4,500 students take the assessment. In 2017, we have 4,600 students. As the graduation requirements become more rigid, it's very, very important that our students do participate in testing. The other options to pass or to have an assessment on the transcript are decreasing as the state continues to change the graduation requirements. We will keep you posted on that as they come along. I know that Ms. Binger has sent emails, School Messengers, to the high school community, anybody in the high school, so it's very important information to be aware of. Problem is, we don't have all of the information from the state. So as we get it, we make sure that you are informed of that. Again, reach out at any time, because we never want to have a student in a position where he or she is ready to graduate, and because he or she did not sit for an Algebra I assessment or a Literacy assessment, the student won't be able to graduate. So we never want anybody to be in that position. And we keep note of who those students are, so that we will probably within the next couple of weeks be reaching out to certain members of the community about that. This is the same information, only for Mathematics. So we had 4,300, approximately 4,300 students assessed in 2016, and in 2017, we had about 4,400 students assessed. So, we'd like to see that number grow a little bit more as well. So when we look at our results from Hillsborough's results and the state results, again, for each level, so similar information, except it's broken down by level, our numbers either don't meet the state numbers in Levels 1 and 2, which is exactly what we want. We don't want them to meet the state levels, and some of those levels are very high, up to 20%, 21% for Grade 11. And our numbers for those students who are meeting or exceeding grade level expectations, most often, if not all the time, exceed the state expectations for Literacy. We see that same information for Mathematics, and same thing stands, for the most part. Our Level 1 and Level 2s are lower than the state, which is what we want, and our Levels 4s and 5s are above the state. Some of the things that we do when we get the PARK data, and it comes in dribs and drabs, and this is typically what we do often for many assessment results that we get, and that is, we want to identify if there are strengths that exist within our curriculum, but more importantly, we want to identify those gaps that exist. If there are certain standards that the state is putting more emphasis on with PARK, we're able to determine that based upon some of the data that we receive. And so we want to ensure that if we are seeing some gaps or trends in the data, that we address those pretty quickly. We look for areas that we need to improve, or areas that we want to just add a little bit more enhancement to, a little bit more rigor. Maybe our students are doing so well, we can do a little bit better there if we just push the needle a little bit. And then, how can we provide additional resources for our staff members to help our students meet the requirements as outlined by PARK? There are resources for parents, and there are on all of the student reports. Those links are also on our website. This will also be on our website, so you can go to this as well. And they are also -- so there are links on our website, there are links in the presentation, and if you Google it, you will -- it will automatically come up as well. So there's a lot of information out there for parents. You ought to have received via School Messenger, I think we sent it out October 2nd, it was the Monday we came back. And we need to let parents and the community be aware of all of the assessments that we give to our students, all of the standardized assessments we assess our students with. And that's very difficult to see. Everybody did receive a School Messenger with it outlined that's also on the website. One thing I want to point out is that the state has not given us the dates for NJAS Science, and then whatever course assessment they're going to do for math at the high school level. We do not have the dates for that year. It's typically around May 25th. That's the way it's been, but they're adjusting that a little bit. We were giving assessments to 4th grade students for many, 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 many years. We received a little bit of information that indicated that we may not be giving them to 4th graders this year, but rather 5th graders. So that's a huge change for our district and for districts across the state. It -- Grade 8 will remain the same. They're considering not going -- not assessing with the NJBCT, which is the New Jersey Biology Competency Test. What they're thinking about doing is moving to more of a -- an assessment that encompasses many science classes at the 11th grade level. So the students would take all of their science classes, and then they would take this test in Grade 11. As soon as we get confirmation on all of that, we will let the community know. We just don't know where we are yet with it. So, the state is going out to bid for the test vendor, and I think that once that goes through, we'll get more information, and then we'll be able to provide that information to the community. That's something we need our community to know pretty quickly. And that's it.
So, any questions from the board?
And again, if anybody does at any point, please reach out. It's a lot. It's a lot when it's hard to see, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Antounis. Continuing on with the superintendent's report, we're going to spend a little time talking about facilities, specifically water testing and lead testing. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mahmood.
Yeah, actually, if you don't mind, Dr. Schiff, I'm going to give a brief overview of where we are at this point with the lead testing in the water supply at our various schools. So about -- during the previous school year, we participated in state-mandated testing in all our schools for lead in all the water outlets. We hired a company through a cooperative purchasing agreement, and they did all the testing for us. We completed that, and we moved on to the next phase, which includes some remediation and some other work. And for that, we went through an RFQ process and hired a second different company. I'm looking at Mr. Mahmood, just so you can correct me if I'm --
Yep.
-- if I err in this. So, we hired a second company to do that. The first thing the second company did, my understanding, is to review what the first company did in that process. And during that, they found some discrepancy about whether the first company that we hired followed the exact state protocol for the testing. They said that they didn't follow the protocol. The first company said they had followed the protocol. We got an opinion from the state DEP. State DEP agreed with the second company that the first company had not followed the protocol correctly for some of the testing. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mahmood to tell you where we go from here on that.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. So, yes, as Mr. Gillette said, when we hired the second company through the RFQ process, the board recognized not only a savings for the work, but also we had a company that had lots of experience with school districts that we were fortunate to partner with. So as a result of some of these, we're going to call them discrepancies between, basically, the Department of Education, the Department of Environmental Protection, our new consultant and the old consultant, where we had had several conversations as a whole. And there are, just to give you a summary, there's a lot of things that we still need as far as information. So there's -- for us to be able to say to you tonight exactly what the number of units are that may be in question, we're not there yet. But we're getting there, and it is a priority for us. We have located seven areas throughout the school district that were never, what we call, had a question about their remediation. And out of those seven, actually, it was nine areas, but seven are -- three at Sunny Mead and four at HES. Those units have been turned off. There is no consumption of water for students. We also, for the other units that Mr. Gillette talked about, we have put up signs about handwashing only. So we've taken a lot of precautionary steps. Once we get final determination as far as the next steps for remediation, we will fill the public in and our board. So with that in mind, I would like to ask Mr. Quintero, our Buildings and Grounds Director, and Tim from EDI to, just if you don't mind, kind of give us a synopsis for the board and the public, without going into much detail, because I know that we don't have all the information, so it's hard for us to come up with a conclusion tonight. But I just want to make sure that the board and the public have a high level of confidence that not only are we following all the regulations, that we're shutting off units that the prior vendor had said to us to keep on. So with that, Mr. Quintero, I'll kind of ask you to summarize.
Thank you.
And then also invite EDI that may have a comment or two.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmood. So, as you have stated, and I'm just going to give you an overview of what's going on so far. The district conducted extensive water testing back in March 2017 by engaging an environmental company to follow the Department of Education and Department of Environmental Protection requirements based on the regulation. This work included testing some of the outlets, the water analysis of these outlets, the interpretation of these results, also make some remedial recommendations to those units that were affected after the results that exceeded elevated levels of lead. The district worked with this process, through with this environmental company, and followed the recommendations made by them at that point. Then the district found that this environmental company made some recommendations that did not work on some of the locations, and we were unsure of those results at that point. In July 2017, as Mr. Mahmood stated, we retained the services of EDI Environmental to provide us with a review of the other environmental company that was executing this program in the past. EDI conducted their preliminary review, and they found some inconsistencies on the water sampling of the program based on the regulations stated by DOE and DEP. That said, it was an interpretation from the other company of the regulation that was the discrepancy between EDI and the accompanying question. That said, DOE and DEP confirmed to us that the interpretation from EDI was correct. Therefore, we acted upon the results of the preliminary consultation by EDI, and we immediately addressed some of these units. EDI at this time, and I'm going to pass along to Mr. Gromen, I'm going to introduce him in a few, is still conducting an analysis and a review further from all the information that has been collected for the past few months, based on the execution of the program by this other company. That said, I'm going to introduce you to Mr. Tim Gromen from EDI, who's going to give you further updates and additional action plans moving forward.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I hope we can answer some of your questions. As Wilson has said, and as Mr. Mahmood has said, in a preliminary review of the information that the previous consultant had put together, we, EDI that is, we discovered that there were some discrepancies, some inconsistencies with the administrative piece of the program, as well as, I would say, the data interpretation and next steps that were implemented. As has been said, we're working through that data. We are expecting a significant delivery of electronic files this week from that other company, which we will then start poring through to understand in better detail what was done. As we get through that analysis, as we complete that review of the records, we'll be able to provide some more specific recommendations to the district in terms of next steps and action plans going forward. In the short term, as has been stated already here tonight, the outlets which were in question, which probably should have been shut off several months ago, those were shut off as of last week. Those are the outlets that were mentioned by Mr. Mahmood and Mr. Quintero. We will be looking to see if there's any others that may be in question, and if there are, we'll take immediate action to shut those outlets off as well. The other documentation that's missing is administrative in nature, but it's critical to the compliance element of your program, and so we're going to be looking to see exactly what was completed, what was provided, and if there are anything that -- if there is anything that's missing, we'll work with the district to fill those gaps and get you back into compliance. That's pretty much it in terms of what I think we can discuss at this point in terms of details that we have.
All right. So, from the board, Mrs. Haas, I saw your hand. Go on.
Why aren't we sharing microphones? Anyway.
Yeah. I mean, I've heard several times here tonight that there were two companies, one said one thing, one said the other thing. What I'd like to understand is, what is the difference in the two companies' methodologies, and what were the differences? Why were there differences? Aren't there set standards for acceptable levels? And why wouldn't that be the same for each company? I don't get this.
Obviously, I can't speak to what the other company did, because we're not them. We weren't here at that point in time. This was done earlier in the year before EDI was engaged by the district. I can tell you that the short answer to your question is yes. There are guidelines and procedures to follow that were implemented -- excuse me, that were published and made available through the DEP, so the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and the New Jersey Department of Education, the DOE. That was the reason why, when EDI got involved and started to look at some of the information that had been provided by your previous consultant, why we started to ask those questions.
Can I jump in? It doesn't really have to do with two sets of acceptable levels or anything like that. It has to do with the process that needs to be -- protocol needs to be followed, as I understand it, after an elevated level is found. What's the next step that has to be done? One, first company that we hired interpreted the state protocol to do such-and-such-a-thing when you find the elevated level. EDI says, no, they really should have done something different. That's the way I understand it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so the state, so we had, all of a sudden, we had two different opinions. We got the state DOE and DEP involved to say, hey, who was right on this?
What I'm hearing is that one company found additional areas that previously hadn't been identified as troublesome.
No, that's not -- that's --
Just said.
I don't think that's -- I don't think that's what happened. Not -- no additional areas.
So, yeah, Mrs. Haas, are you -- so the amount of testing we did was a finite number. That didn't change.
Right.
There was no additional testing that was done. EDI is not recommending. We followed all the protocols for the proper amount of outlets to be tested. The discrepancy, I think, is what Mr. Gillette's trying to say, is the process in which they identified. Both companies are saying, so when the first company did a test, they came back and they did a -- what was the name of that test?
Flush.
An initial draw. That initial draw for all six -- there were 60 units that came back from the initial draw that indicated that they were high in levels of --
Elevated.
Elevated levels of lead.
Right.
Of the 60 units, the first company said that you can go back and you can flush those 60 units and then retest them.
Okay.
EDI is saying to us, and so is the Department of Environmental Protection and DOE, that the flush, the initial draw, basically, once that's identified as an elevated level, you must take remediation. You must do something. You can't just go flush it, retest it, and say it's good.
Sounds right to me.
Yes. So, now, the process is, we've identified the conclusion of that identifies nine areas that when that -- it's not 60, because when we look at the ones that we shut down, we shut down all but the 60, all but the nine. So the nine areas that are in question, we have immediately shut them down as of last week. We're going to remediate them and then follow the right protocol.
It puts us back -- it puts us back to step one on nine units, which should have been done -- we should have been done with this months ago. It puts us back to step one on those. That's all.
Correct. Absolutely correct.
So, we haven't mentioned even the name of the other company tonight so far. I don't think anyone's mentioned it yet.
No.
And we don't want to characterize too much about it, because we're going to have some -- seek some remedies.
I certainly would hope so. That was going to be my next question.
Yeah. So that's why I'm being sort of incoherent, because we're not going to -- I don't want to say too much more, because, you know.
I mean, honestly, this is too serious.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is absolutely too serious.
Right. Yeah, it is. But, you know.
We're following everything we need.
Are these --
It's a good thing we called.
Are these seven classrooms? Are these seven outlets classrooms? Nine?
So, of the seven areas, they're all what we call bubblers, so they would be like drinking areas. Those are the ones that we put out of commission.
And the other two were what? Mr. Mahmood, the other two, that make up the nine?
So, two are Wood Fern, which basically, they're on alternate sauce anyway. So we have three at Sunny Mead and four at HES.
And two at Wood Fern, they don't drink from the water fountains at Wood Fern in any case. So that's all.
So, but the three, when you say they're bubblers, are they in the classroom or are they in the hallways?
Yes. Bubblers are in the classroom. Most of the time, bubblers, Mr. Hia, are connected to -- Most of the time, bubblers, Mr. Hea, are connected to, to a faucet. So, the bubblers are unique. You have a faucet, then you have this little, like, water fountain they call a bubbler.
So, that's how many students? That's seven classrooms of students that are affected?
No, they're not seven classes, they're seven units.
Seven units.
Yes. So, I, I don't, I, I don't have the exact, actually, we do have the exact breakdown of the units, but they're not seven classrooms, it's units.
But there's only one unit, only one bubbler per class.
It could be two units in one class.
But only one bubbler.
True.
So, if they're all bubblers.
Are they all bubblers, EDI and Wilson?
The list that was just shut down, yes, those were all bubblers.
So, they could be possibly classrooms, each one of them?
Yes, I, I, I believe they are classrooms.
Okay. So, correct, Mr. Cooper, they are.
All of these work.
Any other questions from the Board? Mr. Kins?
Just have a quick question. Is there, the requirements and like the criteria and the protocols that are provided by the DOE and the DEP, are those in alignment or are they, are they one in the same? Do they say the same thing or do they state things differently or have different requirements? Just curious.
They are in alignment.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Public comment, public question. Oh, we have more Board, see?
I didn't really, I apologize.
Dr. Sossan.
Yes, I would like to ask if we are going to be notifying the, the parents in those, of the students in those classrooms?
May I?
Yes, Dr. Sossan, we do have a notification requirement. We are working with EDI. Our intent is to have that notification go out tomorrow. We've already spoken internally about what that's going to look like. So, we will be notifying all, all the, the parents that are involved and all the schools that are involved. So, we will do as we've done in the past. Not only are we going to do a notification, we're going to post it on our website so that there's a clear understanding of what we're dealing with. And once we shut down units, we are required to do public notification, and that's what we're going to do.
Okay. And we will be having water, drinking water available in those classrooms?
We have done that in the past, and we're going to do that here. We've provided alternate, you know, additional drinking water, whether it's water bottles, in this case, we can do renewable, reusable, but we will be providing water, you know, water sources for those classrooms.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the Board? Okay, let's have questions from the public, just on this matter, and then we'll go to the other matters later. Hi.
Hi, Kitty Ward, teacher at Sunnymead, Secretary of the HEA, and Chairman of the HEA's newly-formed Health and Safety Committee. A couple of questions I think were addressed. You are looking at this first company and considering not paying them as much, would be my hope, if they did things incorrectly.
Any legal actions will be discussed in executive session.
Yeah, we're not going to discuss those in public.
Absolutely, don't, I'm just, just, that was one of my points. My, my one question, or my several questions, my one question is, just as a matter of reference, is the testing that was required by the state, is that going to be an annual thing or was this a one-time and done?
So, we are required to do it every six years. That is the law.
Okay. And so, my other understanding is, the first testing of however many units it was, we tested in most rooms, the faucet that was in the classroom sink and the bubbler that's sort of attached right there. I was looking at the data last night, and there is one, which happened to be my former classroom. It doesn't appear that the faucet was tested. Now, it's turned off, so it's, you know, we're not concerned. The bubbler was definitely high. I don't know if that got lost in the shuffle or if it's just not on the report, but there's only one item for Room Six, and Room Six has both the faucet and bubbler. So, there's that issue. But when they did the initial test, there was a whole bunch that came out okay, and then there were these ones that we then retested. Do we, and I hate to use this word, but do we trust that the ones that came out okay are really okay? Or are we not questioning the process, the initial process?
So, so the, the answer to your question is no. I, I'm not going to say at a public meeting that we trust anything at the moment. We are working with EDI, and there has been some discussion about looking at this from the beginning. So, basically, I, I don't want to say that that's what we're going to do, but I can say to you that I, our level of concern and our Board's level of concern is heightened, that we, we're still exploring options, but an option of relooking at this holistically is something what we would consider. The, the amount of, we're talking about student safety.
Sure.
And the amount of, of, of things that are involved with this are, have raised our concern pretty high. So, there has been some discussion. Again, I can't make the commitment tonight, but that has been spoken about.
And then, the, the final comment is that we're sticking to the idea that in a classroom where there is a classroom sink and a bubbler, we're shutting the whole unit down. So, obviously, I know they cannot drink from the unit, but we now have seven, and I guess we could all agree these are primary classrooms because they're in the elementary schools, seven classrooms that are not able to properly wash their hands, which in an elementary classroom occurs anywhere between three to five times as a group and as an individual even more frequently. We do have hand sanitizer, but as everyone knows, that is not killing all of the germs. It doesn't wash away the peanut butter or any of the other allergens. So, it's, it's, you know, and I don't have a solution for this. I mean, we can get water bottles, I can solve that problem, but I don't, I don't have a solution of how these kids can wash their hands, but it is, it's a concern.
Yeah, Mr. Quintero, you may be able to answer this question. I do know that we have many of the faucets that are now hand wash only for that particular reason. So, if you could answer that question.
Yeah, that, that is correct. We have, out of the 60 locations that came back elevated, all the faucets were replaced with hand washing sign only, so you'd be able to wash your hands. On those units that were identified as consumable or drinking units, we put those out of commission.
So, if we go back to school tomorrow and I see a sign that says hand washing only, I can expect that I can turn the faucet on, they can wash their hands, but the bubbler is still out of commission?
That is correct.
Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. So, and that's all been taken care of and signed, and it should be good, you won't hear from me tomorrow morning?
That is correct. Yeah, all, all those 60 units have the, the ones that are in question. The ones that have in question about the hand wash, any unit that we required hand wash only, the sign's already in place.
Okay.
The overwhelming balance of the 60 that we're referring to are faucets, not, are, are the, not, they're not bubblers, they're not the water fountain types, they're the faucets. So, rather than shutting off all of them, I think the decision was made to, to make them hand wash only, but they shouldn't be drinking from those.
So, I'm sorry.
They just want to talk in the microphone.
So, in the, there's a faucet, there's two handles, and right here, attached, attached in the corner, is the bubble. We should be able to wash our hands in the faucet, but not drink from the bubble, and obviously not drink from the faucet.
I just want Mr. Quintero to verify that on the record.
That is correct. If you have a faucet, two faucets and one drinkable unit, the two faucets may have a what, a hand wash only sign, and then the bubbler will be put out of commission.
Thank you.
Greg, some, some of the 60 have been remediated also.
Yes.
So, we're not talking about 60 signs.
No.
We're talking about, do we know how many have been remediated out of the 60?
Yeah, but we're still, yes, Mr. Cooper, but EDI is uncomfortable tonight because they, now they're going back to each and every unit. So, we, part of your statement is correct. I just don't want to make that commitment until they, they have enough information.
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, Laurel Drive. First question for the Board is, when were the signs put up stating that these were hand wash only, these, these outlets?
I don't know.
We'll let Mr. Quintero, Mr. Quintero, when was those signs put up?
This morning.
Thank you. So, the signs were put up this morning, which leads me to my next question, is what was the period of time between these units initially being cleared and some action being taken in terms of signage or remediation, things of that nature?
So, I, I don't believe, Henry, we have, let me just give you the perspective of the Board and the administration. Very good question. We have never, if, if you're looking to, the suggestion is that we were aware of something, we didn't respond to it immediately, that would be false.
No, that, that would not be my question.
Okay, so, just to clarify.
Sure, just to clarify, my question being is, we originally had an opinion, which was a trusted opinion and rightfully so, I'm not questioning that, but we're now going back and saying that there's something with the procedure that has brought those results into question. So, it's foreseeable that we had some results that came back with a false negative. We reopen those outlets. My question being, how long were these outlets in use prior, before we actually took some steps, either turning them off and bringing in EDI or putting up an actual sign, which was, the signs were this morning?
It, it was immediately after we found out that there were discrepancies. So, once we found out that things were questionable, and the administration then started to get involved and call ourselves, talked to the Department of Environmental Protection and the DOE and EDI and PARs, is as soon as we assumed fair game that this company has been through a consortium, they have a state contract, and they have also worked with many other school districts in the state of New Jersey.
Sure.
So, we took base value of what that organization shared with us. The minute we were told that stuff was, may have been a discrepancy, we needed to understand what the policies were, what the discrepancies were, and as soon as we were able to identify that, is, so for me to say to you, Henry, it, it was a week, it was three days, I don't have that. What I do have is, the minute we were notified that there could be a problem, we addressed it.
Okay, and I, I appreciate that, and I'm not saying that there was any lack of response on the Board's part, you're operating under the information that you're given. I guess my main concern arises from the fact that there seems to be some discrepancy between the results, so it's foreseeable that we possibly did have an outlet open that staff or student could have consumed water from, which we are now revisiting and saying maybe they shouldn't have. Is that correct?
That's a possibility, yes.
Okay. Now, Dr. Sossan had asked about the parental notification. You spoke to sending out a message. Does that mean that we're going to take steps beyond just using the simple posting on the website? We're actually going to notify the parents directly that are in these classrooms?
Yes, that's what we've done in the past also. So, whenever there's an exceedance in a particular classroom, all of the families in that, in that area are notified directly.
Okay. And is that message sent out in more than one language? Is it sent out strictly just English? Is it made, are we sure? Are there print copies?
Sent out through, yeah, through school messenger, but we'll have to check on, on whether or not there are any barriers, and whatever the barriers are, we'll, we'll, we'll remove them.
Okay, would you be willing to commit to providing print copies in case there are students who don't have access to technology on a regular basis?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mahmood, you had said that we were in the process of looking back to the beginning to reconsider all of these things.
Yes.
At what point are we going to actually have a determination that can be shared with the public stating, yes, we need to go back and revisit our testing, no, it was only these, you know, 60 in question? When will that conclusion be made?
It's a good, good question, Henry. I, I think at this point, what we're waiting on is, and I think Tim had mentioned this from EDI, we're waiting on electronic CDs from PARs. EDI needs to take in all of that information. Once they have it, then they're going to be able to assess to us and say, either they're going to recommend that we take a look at this from scratch, or with high level of confidence that we can move forward with, you know, within the number of rooms that are in question. So, as far as the timing of it, it really depends on how quickly we've demanded. We didn't ask for this information for PARs. We basically demanded that we want this ASAP so that we can address this, and we don't want this to linger any further.
Sure.
So, it's just really waiting on that, that company to provide us with the information and then give EDI a fair opportunity to assess.
Sure, and absolutely, I appreciate that, and I appreciate that it would take EDI some time to go through those results. I guess that returns to my question though, so is it possible that we had previously cleared ones that this number could increase, the faucets or the bubblers, that possibly we had ones that we'll revisit and say, these ones shouldn't have been cleared either?
It's unknowable at this point.
I, I couldn't hear you, Doctor.
I'm sorry, it's unknowable at this point. But we're going to go through the steps and allow our professionals to make a determination about whatever additional testing they would recommend. Whatever they recommend, I will recommend it strongly to the, to the school board, and I, and I anticipate that there'll be full support in doing whatever our professionals direct us to do.
Sure, but it is possible, correct?
Wait, wait, please finish. Yes, of course it's possible, but I, I can't tell you a certainty.
Oh, sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Good, Dr. Sossan?
I, I'll just ask the question I think that Mr. Goodhue was trying to get at. Is there any indication at this point that the methodology that was used with the initial testing was faulty or just the interpretation? Does EDI have any indication that?
Tim, I'll just.
I mean, a test is usually.
Let me, let me just clarify. I, I don't think there's any evidence, we haven't seen any evidence that, that testing was faulty or that the interpretation of the results were faulty, only that the protocol used did not comply with the state protocol, which is that once you have a elevated test, your next step should be immediate remediation, not a flushing and a retest, which might be a, a protocol in other jurisdictions, it may be a protocol in that generally accepted in that industry, but not this specific state protocol. So, that, that's the only evidence that we have so far, but I'm going to let.
Right, that's, I just want to be clear, because I think that's what Mr. Goodhue is asking.
Yeah.
If there's any evidence at all, that either the testing, the methodology, or the interpretation of the tests.
Well.
Not the interpretation of what to do next, which is, we know is faulty. But is there any indication, has it been found in other districts, or does EDI have anything at this point?
It's one of the reasons we're waiting to have the additional data provided by the other company, so that we can see, so we can look. We've requested that they provide field notes and some of their supporting documentation as well as the formal, official records that have been provided to the district to date that are available on your website. It's premature to say whether or not the entire protocol that was utilized was inappropriate or does everything need to be revisited. I think as Mr. Mahmood said in his opening statements, that certainly is on the table as a possibility with, if you look at the full realm of possibilities that are out there. But at this point, it would be premature to say that that's what we need to do.
Has EDI done any testing of its own that to compare to what you're going to see come back from the previous contractor?
EDI did some very preliminary testing, this was in July? No, excuse me, that was in August, excuse me, it was in August. And that was one of our first involvements in the program, in the, in the lead-in drinking water program. There had been some remediation done at, at a number of outlets, and the initial results that came back from the other company caused some questions to be raised within the district. So, remediation had been put in place, a combination of changing faucet fixtures as well as putting in filters, and the expectation was that that would reduce the lead levels in the water to below the action level. The results that the other company provided said some of those, some of those solutions were effective and some of them were not. So, we were asked to, to get involved and look to see what possible reasons there were for the failure of those remediation actions. And it's through that process that we've started to ask questions, and those led to other questions, et cetera, and, and, and why we're here today, talking about this. Why are we here today?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the Board on this? While, while EDI is here, I'm going to ask Mr. Mahmood to address another area that some public and Board had concerns about.
Yes. So, another area that EDI has been working with us on is at our high school, and there has been lots of questions and concerns, rightfully so, about the experience that we had last year with mold spores and some questions about what had, what happened last year, but more importantly, that this year, there was some testing and numerous amounts of testing. So, I wanted EDI to have an opportunity to share with the Board the steps they have taken so far, sort of give an overview of what's, what's going on at the high school and sort of what are the next steps as we continue to monitor the high school. So, Tim, I'll just give you an opportunity to kind of share a summary. We'll open it up for some questions, and then we can go from there.
Sure. Prior to the start of the school year and the end of August, EDI collected something like 80 samples throughout the high school, airborne samples for. like 80 samples throughout the high school, airborne samples for, specifically for mold spores or fungal spores. We targeted areas to sample based on some of the work that was done last year, as we were told that there were some issues in the high school. We also targeted some areas based on some visual assessment that our field staff did. We got the results back from those air tests, and the indication was that there, there weren't any real areas of concern, with the exception of one classroom. We returned about two weeks, excuse me, we returned about one week later, we resampled in that one classroom, and the results of that sampling event, again, indicated, in our professional opinion, that there wasn't an airborne mold problem in that room. We took extensive temperature and humidity readings throughout the high school, we looked at the dew points, we also looked at carbon dioxide levels, and we did visual assessments throughout the school, looking for areas of water damaged or water impacted building materials. So specifically, looking at ceiling tiles and sheet rock or any plaster walls. The summary, conclusion of that assessment was that there weren't any conditions in the high school that warranted any type of remediation activity, or warrant any real further investigation at the time. And so as the district had asked us, you know, was there anything preventing them from opening up the school, or sections of the school beginning, for the beginning of the school year? And, and we said no. And so that, that was the, the summary of what we did prior to the, the start of the school year. And we've had some issues lately as well, if you'd like me to address those.
Sure, please.
Okay. So in the high school auditorium, about two weeks ago, there was a, an issue, there were some suspect mold growth discovered on some of the chairs in the auditorium. EDI came up, we did some swab sampling to identify what was on the chairs, we also did some air sampling in the auditorium, the hallway outside of their auditorium, and of course, as we always do, outdoors to get a baseline reading of what the, the spore counts are like around the school. That evening after we finished taking our samples, the district had a professional cleaning company come in and spot clean a number of chairs throughout the auditorium. Two days later, we were called back to investigate some more suspect materials on the chairs. On that event, we sampled extensively, approximately 75 different chair locations within the auditorium, and we also took some air samples as well. And then the next morning, the district again had a professional cleaning company come in and clean chairs throughout the auditorium. The sum of all of that sampling event and cleaning is that, you know, the airborne levels of mold spores in the, in the auditorium were significantly low, much lower, several orders of magnitude lower than what was outside, and based on the cleaning that was done, it was our recommendation that the auditorium could be open and occupied. That being said, we also had some other follow-up recommendations, as Mr. Mahmood alluded to, next steps. Clearly, there's a condition going on in that auditorium that warrants further investigation. We know that the district is working with their mechanical contractor to look at the air handling unit that supplies that auditorium. Specifically, there are, there is, or there was, high relative humidity levels in that auditorium, levels that were, would be considered outside of what the, the ideal ranges are for indoor humidity levels, and that can obviously be a factor in the growth of mold. So the district, as I'm aware, is looking into those mechanical systems, looking to see what kind of improvements can be made, changes, upgrades, et cetera, to address what we believe is the underlying issue, which is the, the, the moisture that's in that auditorium. I'm sure you're familiar enough with mold and mold issues, that you know controlling water is the key to controlling mold growth, whether that's a leak, or a flooding situation, or high humidity levels. So the mold that you might see is really a symptom of an underlying problem. And so, again, there's short-term solutions that can be done, and then there are longer-term solutions. And all of those have, have, you know, various pros and cons to them, I'll say. So that's where we are with the situation with mold as it relates to the high school.
Questions from the board? No? You've had enough of mold for the next 10 years?
We have questions.
All right, from the public?
I have, just have a question.
Mrs. Sintefanti?
Sorry.
Sorry.
When we talk about the mold, I mean, I know you're there to assess it, and then help us figure out what to do on the mechanical side, because I had asked about HEPA filters, which I was told we'd have to put too many in there to actually do anything. Which, obviously, then that's a bigger problem, but even a dehumidifier, would anything, because everything that's in that auditorium is what is, could hold the mold, as the memo said, the wood, the carpets, everything. Right, everything in that auditorium, this, the carpet, the curtain, is just a great place for mold to grow. So is there, if we could, HEPA filters wouldn't work, if that, because we don't have a lot of airborne mold, so that necessarily isn't going to fix that problem. Would any dehumidifiers in the woodroom or anything help in that area, temporarily, until we can fix the bigger problem?
So I actually discussed that with your mechanical contractor, about putting portable dehumidifiers in there, and the answer that I got back from, from the mechanical contractor was, the volume of air that's in that space is so great, that it really was not feasible or impractical, I think was the word that they used for me, to me, to put in that many portable dehumidifiers to get, to have an appreciable effect. I think they would probably be more qualified to answer that kind of question than I would be. I think on the surface of it, your question is correct, you know, we're trying to reduce humidity, so why not put dehumidifiers in the space? But I think from a practical perspective, they were looking at it, that it was not a practical solution, but that maybe something that the, that the-
Right, I don't think it's a long-term solution.
A long-term solution, again, I'm not a mechanical contractor, but long-term solution is to have some type of dehumidification, dehumidification controls built into your air handling unit, so that you can handle it. Or that you have the ability to, to do that to a certain extent with what you have now, but you'd have to maybe make some changes or upgrades to the systems. But those are getting into details that aren't my bailiwick, but I understand that those are the things that are being discussed, and that are being looked at on the mechanical side of things.
Thank you.
Public?
So actually, can I just ask one question? Mr. Mahmood, has anything changed in the last year and a half or so with respect to the mechanical system at the high school? Like why, the air condition, why September 2016 did we have the issue, but not September 2015?
The, the major change, Mr. He, that, that we did was, we contracted out for the ESIP, the Energy Savings Improvement Program, and as a result of that, from 15 to 16, we added air conditioning at the high school, there were changes to other elements of the high school that were not done in 2015. So, you know, 2016, we had a problem, 2017, now we're seeing some remnants of a problem. So we, we are aware that the only major change, and when I say major, there was, the board, there was a $16 million ESIP that we commit, that we changed, the high school had a significant portion of that.
So the, I'm not familiar with the air conditioning that was done at the high school, so was that the auditorium?
No.
Was that out? The 102, and how far away is that from the auditorium?
Right next door.
Oh, it's right next door.
We, I don't have, I apologize, I don't, I don't have the exact, we can get that for you, to kind of show you where, what we do have is, we were able, when, when we were looking at last year and all these concerns that came up, we sat down with a few of our professionals, we also sat down with our insurance company, and what they did is, they were able to sort of show us where certain areas were changed, and then we were trying to tie that to possibly where some of this mold growth took place. So we, we do have an idea, I, I just apologize, I didn't bring it with me tonight, but we do have a graphic, we have the map of the high school, what was changed, and the problem areas. Clearly, we know that there were some changes that may have contributed to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add, if I may, to, to the question. You're also talking about a system that is, I think, 15 or 16 years old at this point? So there just sort of is a natural degradation of a system, so your, your question is a good question, why, two years ago, we didn't see a problem, but a year ago, we did, and a year ago this year? It may, it may be, it may just be that you're, you're dealing with a system that's, that's older, and that, when things get older, there tends to be more problems.
Thank you.
If I may just add to his comments, the unit in the auditorium is about 17 years old. This, this handler, air handler does not have a humidification package built into it. So right now, we're looking at, as a short-term solution, we're looking at putting actual actuators, new actuators, reheating valves, and also putting a humid stack into the unit. As a long-term solution, and, I'm sorry, let me go back, in order for these reheating valves to dehumidify the space, or recondition the space, then you need to turn your boilers on, to start to stand. By turning your boilers on, then you need to engage the controlling system, or the automated system that was put into the ESIP program to regulate your condition in some of the classrooms. So it, it's a domino effect. Well, as a short-term solution, what we're doing is putting what is called data loggers, we should be receiving those within the next two days, they're going to be mounted in the auditorium of a four of them, which they're going to give us readings on humidity, dew point, and actual temperature every two hours, in consistency with the load that you have in the auditorium. On the mechanical aspect, you have, we're going to have a dehumid, humid stack put into the unit, reheating valves, and also looking into our coil system. So that's the initial steps. In the long term, what we're going to highly, what I want to recommend highly to the board is replacing the unit for a unit that has a built-in dehumidification, dehumidification package, so that way you have a, a bigger management of the auditorium when it comes to climate control.
Thank you. Anyone else before we go to public? Okay. Public, thank you.
I don't know if you need data loggers, I can just go and based upon my hair, how flat it is, we'll tell you the humidity level. So I just had a question about the suspect material. So you went in and tested the suspect material, did it in fact come back as mold, just not airborne mold, the suspect material? Or did it come back, like, what was it, I dare ask?
White asparagus.
Yeah, please, please.
Did mold grow one, what they thought was on the chair or something?
If it wasn't identified as mold, we did not do a materials analysis on it, so I cannot answer the question of what it was if it wasn't mold.
But it was not mold, or?
I'm looking at my, we sampled 75 seats, 56 of them came back with none detected. So no mold spores detected at all on the material that was sampled.
The remainder?
The remainder, there were 16 seats that came back that were reported with higher levels of mold, because the samples that get, swab samples are reported as none detected, rare, low, medium, or high, which just means that it was mold.
It was high mold?
It just means that there was mold, yeah, it was a high.
If it was low, it would not mean mold?
It would mean that there were fewer spores, so there's a range of spores that are detected.
Like an acceptable range, if you will.
It's not about being acceptable, it's just about how many. So it's a lot or a little.
Great, but it came back high, and then that was the first of sampling, and then two weeks later, there was more sampling, or was that the second sampling?
I think you're maybe confused with-
Probably.
What we did in the summer versus what we just did in the auditorium.
Okay, so this was just once recently, within the last couple of weeks?
Last week. Week, was it last week? That was the week before.
September 28th.
Sorry. It was September 26th and 28th.
Okay, and that's the only sampling in September so far?
Correct.
Thank you. So I guess my final question, if I keep saying that, is, how do we identify, or what is the protocol, if you will, for, you know, does somebody walk in every morning and say, okay, we're good, no mold, like, do you know what I'm saying? Or how do we track that? How is that being tracked? Obviously, we have some things in place that looks like you're trying to remediate it, but I'm talking about tomorrow with the humidity that we've had for the last 24 hours. I'm thinking there might be some suspect material, hopefully not, but maybe.
So, so one of the, we, we do have a protocol that we put in place where if staff, students, custodians, any of the, the team that's over at the high school identifies a suspect area, that I believe, Mr. Quintero, there is a visual inspection, so somebody goes out, they take a look. If, if at that point, Mr. Quintero feels, hey, this is something I need to call EDI about, then he makes that phone call. I can say that we have been pretty heightened when it comes to the high school. So it, you know, where we can say, no, we're not going to test, that that's not what we did. Anytime something has come up, because of the seriousness of the high school and all the history we've had there, that we pretty much are looking to anything that becomes suspect, becomes an issue for us, and we want to make sure we address it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alina Misari, Hillsborough High School, HEA, Second Vice President. Thank you for taking our concern seriously at the high school. I'm sure it goes without saying that it's been a long road. You spoke before about humidity levels in the auditorium being beyond an acceptable percentage. Does that apply for all areas in the building, or just in larger spaces?
Come on up. Yeah, just, just stand by, Wilson.
That's okay. We use an ASHRAE standard, it's not regulatory, it's, it's just a, an industry guideline that says that indoor humidity levels should be between 30 and 60 percent, and that's for any, any indoor, any indoor environment. You may see some references to indoor humidity levels not being above 50 percent as well, but we, we stick with the 30 to 60 range, and that would be for an office, to an auditorium, or, or anywhere else.
Okay, so my follow-up with that would be, there are most definitely rooms, classrooms and other instructional areas in the building that are registering well above those, that standard or range of humidity acceptable. Many of our members have the little pop-up temperature gauges in the room, which do outside temperature, inside temperature, and humidity, and we're seeing readings in the 70 percent. So we have communicated with our building, but what is going to be done? How can we decrease the humidity in those rooms? There was, I know, a short-term fix in some of the interior rooms in the 200s, to try to eliminate the humidity from coming in, and the moisture by blocking off vents. I have noticed in walking around that that's not globally in all rooms, so is there something in the works to help decrease those humid areas?
Wilson? Step up.
Okay, so some of the locations in the 100 and 200 section, as you just mentioned, we were recommended to block off the air, air fan system, so ventilation system, because the actual mechanical systems in the roof were not working properly, so they were dragging humidity into the rooms versus not air out the humidity. You also have on some of these locations, based on the, through the ESIP program, you have some of the univens that are very large, overcooling some of the spaces, which means that cooling is okay, but when you overdo it, you're going to have an excess of moisture on the specific room. So with the core mechanical, we're trying to identify how we could put dehumid stacks on these locations, on these actual units, so we could regulate the climate on those specific air deals or taking units that are located in these rooms. One thing I could say, that the staking units that are in the 100 section were possibly put for heating, discharging possibly three to six tons of air into the rooms, and not considered so much for cooling at that point, what the ESIP program went through. So with our mechanical contractors, we're looking into putting possibly additional valves to regulate these units, and that coincides with load in the room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Henry Goody, Hillsborough Education Association. Just had three questions and one sub-question. You mentioned the humidity levels being between 30 and 60 percent as acceptable, what was the level within the auditorium? The humidity level? The humidity level?
So on the, the day that we checked, on September twenty-sixth, the humidity levels ranged from sixty-nine point four to seventy-five point five with the air conditioning, or the, excuse me, the air handling unit running, and it peaked for a period of time while the unit was off at eighty-three point two percent.
Thank you, and that leads me to my next question. The air sampling, I'm assuming, was done when you were called in, and that's kind of a snapshot? Was it done at different points throughout the day, being that we saw the fluctuation within the humidity, so that we could check if it was, you know, did the spores increase when the actual system wasn't on at night, to possibly identify if they're getting moved around when we're taking the samples?
The sampling was done just while we were present in the school, so for a period of time, we were there for about an hour, I guess, while we were sampling. The sample itself is a, runs off of a portable pump, it's a battery-operated pump, it runs at fifteen liters a minute, and it runs for five minutes, so we draw seventy-five liters of air, and that's the standard that is used for that particular type of analysis. So your three samples that were done inside the auditorium, total time of running would have been fifteen minutes.
And my next question, I don't know if it's, who would address this one, but being that we have staff members and students with high allergy reactions to mold, they're very allergic to it, even without knowing that it's in the air, is it possible that they could suffer adverse reactions, knowing that we do know there's something in there, suspect and mold as well, is it possible that they could have reactions as well? And I would say, if so, what steps can we take?
I'm not sure that, not to evade your question, but I'm not sure that I can answer a medical question about whether someone can have an allergy or not, or allergic reaction or not. I think if someone is allergic to mold, or any allergen, and that allergen is present, the possibility of them having a reaction is real, it exists. What can you do as far as next steps in trying to reduce that? I think those are some of the comments that we've been talking about here tonight, and what Wilson was mentioning with regard to longer-term solutions to the HVAC system in that area. And short of that, you know, I'm not sure that there are really great answers to say, what can we do about airborne mold in the auditorium, or anywhere else. As you know, mold is all around us. We need to create indoor conditions, though, that are such that mold isn't, it's not conducive to the growth of mold, as I mentioned before, we need to control the moisture levels, control the humidity, and if you read the, any of the documentation put out by NJDEP, the Department of Health, the CDC at the federal level, the EPA at the federal level, it's all about controlling mold, excuse me, controlling moisture in order to control mold. And I think that's the direction that the district is working on, is to try to control that humidity level to get a handle on that.
Sure, and just as a follow-up to your question, you mentioned airborne, is it possible to have allergic reactions if it's not airborne, if it's present on the seats, or carpet, or the other areas that you said Bonnie spoke to?
Honestly, I'm not sure, I think it would have to do with the allergic pathway for the individual, if it's a contact type of reaction, or if it's an inhalation reaction, and I wouldn't know the answer to that.
Okay, thank you. And just as my final question, being that we've seen some fluctuation, and we observed growth within a forty-eight hour period, are we going to think about possibly resampling, or possibly doing air sampling over different periods of time? It seems like a pretty large range of fluctuation to have sixty-nine point four percent up to eighty-three percent, and if we could identify when those fluctuations occurred, I think it would be possibly a good idea to sample at those times, especially considering that we seem to have it come back after a period of time, at least within this last round.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to ask Tim.
Sure.
If we, if the three levels of humidity that you, that you, results that you got, those were from three different areas of the auditorium?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not over time, it's three different areas of the auditorium, so it's not fluctuating over time?
Well, it is fluctuating over time.
Oh, it is, okay.
As well, yes, it is, and I think that's the reason why the mechanical contractor recommended to put those data loggers in.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So that they can, they can see the fluctuations, and then they should be able to, again, I'm speaking for another company, but they should be able to correlate what the temperature and humidity levels are like in the auditorium, and correlate that to when their system is running, and what set points, et cetera, that they have. And then I think the idea is that they can fine-tune the system between temperature and humidity controls on that unit, to try to get a more even and, you know, appropriate climate in that auditorium.
So that's going to help us with the monitoring that Mr. Goodhue is, I think, suggesting? That, the data logging, right?
Just my question to you, sir, from EDI, was, being that we're talking about fluctuations, is it possible that air samples could have different results based off of the time that they're taken, or the conditions, humidity, lack of, or anything?
Yes, as you mentioned, the air sample is a snapshot in time, and with mold in particular, mold levels will change throughout the course of a day, they can change throughout the course of a week, a month, and so, yes, it would not be at all unusual to see a change in spore levels to come back at different times, to take tests at different times and see different levels, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Mahmood, if you must.
Yes, I just want to say that we didn't acknowledge also our high school administration, who has been extremely diligent in reporting out to us any areas that they have a concern about. So I would like to acknowledge the high school administration, because they have been extremely diligent in reporting stuff to us, like, timely, I mean, within minutes, we'll get pictures and concerns, so we would like to acknowledge them in this discussion. And also, Henry, I don't give a lot of compliments to you, maybe once annually, so I know you also have been doing a lot of work, you've been doing a lot of work for us, and your camera with the pictures, and I appreciate that, because what that does, it just heightens our awareness, brings us to reality, and says, let's take a look at this stuff, so I just want to say thank you.
All right, anything else from the board on this?
I just wanted to answer, Mr. Goodhue had a question, and I just think I can answer it for him, he was talking about medical issues.
Well, you want to serve yourself up as a medical expert on this? Then go ahead.
No, I mean, well, being a nurse, I mean, one of the things that you want to look more is respiratory, pulmonary. Anybody respiratory, asthmatic, pulmonary would have issues with your humidity and mold.
That just was on.
Since I'm an immunologist, I'll take this, if the, if the spore levels are lower than what there is outside, there should be no additional risk, if, even if they're equal to, but yes, you're right, there's no, there's never been anaphylaxis to mold, reported. There are, there are people who are, who have asthma issues and things like that, their normal regimen should be fine, even with elevated levels of mold, unless it's extremely high, and they have a lot of exposure, meaning they're there for many hours. But I don't think that there's much to worry about, especially given that EDI has found that after the remediation, the mold spore level goes lower than what is environmentally, you know, outside. And I do think that this is a very limited term, if we're supercooling the air in there, and it's twelve feet away from a ninety-degree exterior, you know, you're going to have condensation, the humidity's going to go up, unless we're actually regulating the humidity in there, I mean, it's simple physics, Mr. Leo, I'm sure teaches this as part of CP Physics course. And, you know, so hopefully, once the temperature goes down, we'll see a decrease in these incidences, but I think it's very important for us not to forget about it, because we'll think we solved the problem, when really, it's the environmental impact that's solving the problem, and then we'll face this again next year. So I think we really need to consider all of what our, Mr. Quintero was saying about the potential for changing the unit, and really allowing some active dehumidification in there.
Greg, Greg, I have a question.
Yes, please.
So with my earlier question, circling back to between what happened in September two thousand and fifteen versus last year, the answer was with the ESIP program, so I have to ask, with the design that was put forth for the air conditioning in the one hundred and two hundred units, what was the process of the design review? Was the entire school looked at in the process? I mean, we're not, the board is not experts in this, so we have a design company, do we have our own experts who reviewed this design, and also took it into consideration for the entire, the entire school?
Well, sure, we had, the company that did the project for us was Honeywell, but they also worked with our architect, who's a professional in this area also, who reviewed...
Does the architect have a professional engineer on staff?
They subcontract one, Mr. Heel, so I don't know if they, they have one specifically at the, at the firm.
So they, they had an ar, professional engineer sign off on the designs in which they?
No, the architect was not responsible for, the design was done by Honeywell, Honeywell did the design. The architect did not have the design responsibility, they did not have that, but that has to be, you know, utmost clear, that what their responsibility was, was to certainly follow through, look at the, as Honeywell became the general contractor, they designed and also became the general contractor, so those particular Dakin units that I believe are overpowering to those individual classrooms, that's a no-no. I mean, we're dealing with that legally, by the way, with our attorney.
This is something that we might have to go into executive session for also, we don't want to get too far into this either. Sorry, sorry, board.
Can I just ask, with, with the board's responsibility in terms of review, does the board review the design at all? We're not experts, so who is our professional advisor in reviewing Honeywell's design? Usually, there's like, when a design is submitted, there's usually a project review committee? How is that handled? Did Honeywell do it internally?
So, yeah, so the engineering and design was done with Honeywell, the company that they hired was submitting proposals for the design, so the check was Honeywell, so the company would come in and say, this is what the unit looks like, Honeywell would be the check. They represented the Board of Education with that design.
Anything else from the, Mrs. Haas?
One of the things that troubled me about this report, and again, I'm not an expert, was that there was a time when EDI was in our high school to do this sampling, and they turned off the HVAC system just for a few minutes, and the humidity level increased to eighty-three percent in less than ten minutes. And I'm starting to wonder whether or not we need to get everybody at the same table, we need to get EDI, and our mechanical people, and our ESIP people at a table to make sure that whatever happened as far as the ESIP is concerned, where the goal was to save electricity, and to save money, and to turn down mechanical systems when they are not being used, such as evenings, weekends, holidays, that those automatic controls that were put in there for, for energy savings are not creating the mold problem.
That's yet another issue that we'd have to go into executive session for, to tell you the truth, when you mentioned controls.
No, but seriously, that's a management issue. You know, you need to make sure when you're using multiple contractors, that they're not doing things that are going to hurt what other contractors are doing. They're not necessarily working for the same purpose.
Yeah, but I think the, the one element that you, that you missed in the list, everything is, that's all good, it was the addition of the air conditioning that was the crucial element in the other issues that we've, that we've had here in the high school. All the other things, the changing all the light fixtures, and saving all the electricity, and changing some of the other systems are working well, and that's, that's, that's all working right, as expected. It was, we used some of the savings and rebates and other things that we generated from the ESIP to be able to purchase the air conditioning as part of the project, and Dr. Schiff, correct me if I'm wrong on that, that's, that's correct, so, and that was the, this is the crucial element. The auditorium is a little bit, those issues were a little bit different, we had a very humid August last, last thirteen, fourteen months ago, there may have been some other issues, too much cooling in there in August, some other things happening, but as you recall, a year ago, we had much more mold concern all around different areas of the high school. That was what Mr. Mahmood was alluding to before, when he talked, when he was talking about the air conditioning in the different places, and we need to fix all of it, and we will, we're going to fix all of it, why not? That's what we're here for. We'll fix it all, it just takes time.
And?
Yeah, of course, well, what else is new? All right, now, we're going to go to the public for comments for new business, I'm sorry. New business? Yeah, new business or items on the action agenda?
Yep.
Do you have any public have a comment for new business or items on tonight's action agenda? Anybody? Before we go to, oh, what are we doing, the proclamation? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Schiff for the action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Gillett, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the air.
We do have some?
Oh, we have, we have one public, he just made it, he just made it.
My name is Donna Seidler, seventeen, Haynes Court, Hillsborough. I wanted to comment about my dismay at the decision to cancel the high school play, based on an issue that had been corrected long ago. And I can understand that some people had, may have had feelings about it, and feelings are legitimate, however, feelings don't represent the current situation, the current fact. I was not happy with the way any of that was handled. The administrator went to talk to the students with the, I think, preconceived notion that the students would just agree, and the students did not agree that it was a good idea to cancel the play, if for no other reason than they were very excited to perform it, because they were familiar with the material, because they learned it in the middle school here. So if it's good enough for the middle school, why can't the high school put it on as play? And then, you know, everything that's fallen since then has just been, it's gone downhill, and we've got a bunch of students now who are a little demoralized, and I kind of feel like decisions are being made without really seriously taking them into consideration. And I'd like to know how you can justify canceling a play when you teach the same material in the curriculum, and that there is other material in the curriculum that uses language that is objectionable. So it just, the logic doesn't, it just doesn't compute.
Well, thank you for your comment, first of all, I just wanted to clarify for you and for other members of the public, that the elected board members don't play any role in this decision. Having said that, Dr. Schiff did talk to me about some issues with the play, and maybe other board members also, I gave him my unsolicited opinion on it, but that's between me and him, and they make the decisions that they make, and we support them, I guess, right? I don't know if anyone else wants to make a comment on it, but I, your comments are definitely heard by the board, I can say that.
Well, I will say that, you know, Dr. Schiff's name was thrown into the original letter, and that sounded like an endorsement from the board to me.
Well, when I, when I say elected board members, I exclude Dr. Schiff as our employee from that. So he's charged with ultimately, ultimately making all, making every decision in the district, I'd say, it ultimately falls to you, Dr. Schiff, good job.
It's all on your back.
I appreciate that, I do appreciate your concern, and not every decision certainly is an easy decision, we made a decision that we felt was, was appropriate under the circumstances. There are going to be times when there's going to be objectionable materials that we have, either in reading materials, or even as part of the play, we make those decisions on an individual basis. I'm the, what resonates with me, what you're, what you're saying, is that some kids felt demoralized about it, and I know that certainly that's not the intent to do that. We try to work with all of our students to help them to feel comfortable, safe, included, appreciated through the process. appreciated through the process. This particular situation was one where we made a decision to try to be more inclusive. And I understand that it upset people.
I have to ask though.
Excuse me, let me just finish my thought. And I understand that it, that it has upset people there, but there was upset on a lot of different sides of this particular issue. What, one of the things that did need to occur is a change in, in how we're doing the fall play this year because we're, due to some factors that were outside of the theater's control, including some mold that backed us up for about a week, and some other issues. There were decisions that were, that were made to make some changes. And I know that that's, that's an adjustment, but our kids are resilient. I anticipate that they will, that they will do well as they move forward here. I know that it was difficult during this time as the decision was being made.
Well, I think that using the word inclusive, I'd like to know, based on what was the idea that they weren't being inclusive?
Well, let me be specific for the audience. There may be people out in the audience that are not aware. The original title of this particular play was Ten Little, and it was N-words. And that I think we can all appreciate was highly offensive.
Correct.
And I don't think there was any reasonable person that would disagree. And then we needed to make a decision whether or not we would continue on, knowing the background and the history of that particular play, albeit that it did change and that the title did change. However, that history was, was still something that was very uncomfortable and was hurtful. So we had to make a decision whether or not we were going to continue to do it. And I know you disagree with that decision.
Well, especially because it's in the curriculum.
And there will be decisions that unfortunately we make here that others will disagree. We, we try to make the right decisions as we, as we go through it. There is, there's certainly going to be disagreement about this particular decision. But I think at the end of the day, moving forward is important for us.
Well, I definitely disagree. You know, you've got Huck Finn that's taught, and that uses that particular word. This play, by the, well, by the district's admission, had no objectionable content. And the correction was made in the third, what, 1940, 1939. So I'd love to know, if that wasn't good enough to fix the problem, then, then what is? Are you going to remove that? Are you going to remove that from the curriculum in the future?
I know you differ with me, ma'am. I shared with you our rationale. We're unfortunately going to have to agree to disagree.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other public?
So my name is Dan Lee, and I'm here representing the Hillsboro Robotics Team, the Hillsboro Roborators. I'm the public relations person, so here I am, giving you guys updates.
Great. Yay. All right.
So I'd like to talk about what we did over the summer and our plans for the school year. So over the summer, we held summer trainings where we were preparing our students for the upcoming school year. We refurbished robots, we resoldered components, we reprogrammed older robots, and I'd say that we did a lot to prepare for this year. And as the school year begins, we've had our first info session last month, and we're expecting a lot of new members. We're not sure what this game will know. We have seen the teaser for this game, and I think that all of us are excited, and we can't wait for the new year to begin. All right. With robotics, with robotics having real-life applications of STEM, which I'm assuming most of our robotics attendees are interested in, I think that it's a very important part, it's a very important club, and I personally really support it, and I'm glad that our school does too. As our season progresses, I will be here giving more updates, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we're always happy to hear our updates from Team 75.
All right. Seeing no one else from the public for new business or action agenda, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Schiff for the action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve traveling-related expenses, self-assessments for last year, to accept the Play Unified Grant for the 2017, 2018 school year, through field trip designations, and we are going to approve tonight the proclamation for red ribbon. So I ask our president at this time if he wouldn't mind reading that proclamation into the record.
Yes, Dr. Schiff, it'd be my pleasure. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to reduce demand for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership and the District Life Skills Committee are sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitments to drug-free lifestyles, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st, 2017, and whereas President Donald Trump and Mrs. Melania Trump are the national honorary chair people to provide this national focus on a drug-free America, and whereas business, government, law enforcement, schools, religious institutions, service organizations, youth, physicians, senior citizens, military, sports teams, and individuals will demonstrate their commitment to drug-free, healthy lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas the educational community of Hillsboro further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign, now therefore be it resolved that the Hillsboro Township Board of Education does hereby support October 23rd through 31st, 2017 as a Red Ribbon Week, and encourages its students and employees to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Be it further resolved that the Hillsboro Township Board of Education encourages its students and employees to pledge, "Your future is key, so stay drug-free."
Yes, we'll move in a second with the items under the education agenda.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely, Ms. Bogoshevsky, Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, Dr. Schiff. Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources to approve the resolution creating a full-time instructional assistant. Also approve the suspension of a staff member, approve retirements and resignations as listed, approve leaves of absences and revise leaves of absences, approve revised long-term substitutes as listed, approve the revised mentor assignments, and the revisions to the transportation drivers and aid hours. Also to approve contract changes as listed, and to approve the appointments of coaches, co-curricular advisors, and substitutes. Also approve co-curricular intermural advisors as listed, and to approve group changes.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion under education? All right, seeing none, roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely, Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Heel?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, operations.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve line item transfers and the policies for second reading as listed.
Do you have a motion? Operations.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, seeing none, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely, Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Heel?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Let's see, we had some informational, blah, blah, blah. Comments from the public for old business or anything else we didn't get to? Would you like to speak now is your opportunity? And also take, board, also, if you have anything left.
Bob Fenster, Hillsboro High School Social Studies teacher. Person aside, I love the board doc's website, it's fantastic, absolutely great how much information you provide. In September of 2016, my supervisor presented the Social Studies Department with a draft of a policy she thought would go into effect this year. It read, in part, and I quote, "If a student fails a summative assessment, the student is urged to approach the teacher to discuss the assessment. The student is encouraged to look at the specifics of the assessment and reflect on his or her preparation to develop a draft of a plan to improve his or her learning in that unit of study. The student may develop a plan with teacher input to complete additional learning on a specific timeline and demonstrate that learning. At the discretion of the teacher, the student will have the opportunity to demonstrate their learning after showing evidence of completing the items in the plan." I'd like to highlight three things about this statement. Number one, it puts the onus on the student to be responsible for second chance learning. Number two, it states that it is at the discretion of the teacher. Number three, it doesn't use the word mastery. To me, this sounds like a reasonable policy. However, the memo sent to high school staff on the first day of in-service on September 5th, 2017, puts the onus on the teacher, removes the component of teacher discretion, and elevates the standard of learning to mastery as opposed to proficiency. When I subsequently spoke to two members of the grading task force this week, or today, they indicated that the committee had reached no consensus nor completed a final report. They felt blindsided by this memo. As the board hasn't officially adopted this memo as a policy, I ask that it be rescinded until administration, teachers, and staff have had more opportunities to weigh in on the pros and cons of these teaching practices and the ideas of imposing them on a one-size-fits-all basis. I have no doubt that the implementation of these practices was well-intentioned and that there are some good arguments in favor of second chance learning, no zeros, et cetera. However, there are an array of potential problems with the policy as written that haven't been examined. To that end, the Hillsboro Education Association will be conducting a survey of our membership, and we will report those findings to the board and to the public. I'd also suggest that the Board of Education includes the perspective of parents and students in this process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is this, can I ask you a question, Dr. Intunis? Or maybe Dr. Schiff? Is this, is this a, is this type of policy that the board acts on?
It's not a policy.
It's a, it's a practice, okay. So it's a best practice, okay. So it's something that you would?
It's a support.
Okay, so it's something you would implement with limited board involvement or none or limited? How would you characterize the board involvement?
Like, like the education committee.
So there's some board involvement, education committee, as Mrs. Haas has reported on some occasions. Oh, no?
Yes.
Okay.
We've discussed it with the board.
Okay, all right. So what I'm trying to get at is, is the public, through the representation of the elected board members, being represented in some part in developing this practice? I'm hearing yes. And that's all, that's all I have for now on this. All right. Anyone else from the public? Yeah, oh, yeah, there you go, there you go.
Hi again. Elena Misery, Hillsboro High School, HGA. Just wanted to take the opportunity to highlight some things that have been going on in our buildings with some of our members on a positive note. At Hillsboro Elementary School earlier this month, the staff helped coordinate the home and school fundraiser, and it was a skate night at Kendall Park Roller Skating Rink. Fifteen staff members attended, signed the families in, and skated along with their families and kids, and the school raised over $1,200 for the home and school budget. So they should be included for that. In addition, we have some members that are currently involved with Project Linus. And if you are not familiar with Project Linus, it is an organization which crochets baby blankets and hats for the needy and sick newborns, and she and some other members in district meet on a monthly basis to do that. So we'd like to applaud their efforts as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, seeing no other public, any old business from the board? Tom, you got nothing? I think he's probably got something.
Yeah, just friendly reminder that next board meeting is not October 23rd, but October 30th, as was acted on last meeting.
Yeah, the last board meeting, right. We moved our meeting to October 30th to accommodate the.
Did we change it on the website?
Did we change it on the website? Good question. We should update it ASAP. Oh, it has been. It is updated. Okay, very good. Okay. Seeing nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're adjourned?
We're not going to executive.
Right, what?
We're not going to executive.
Oh. We're not going to executive session. There's, we're already adjourned, but I'll just say that.